Recording in progress.
All set? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the town of Powell's Select Board Meeting. Six o'clock, August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Call the meeting in order, please. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Carl Stromeyer, Mike Gardner.
Jamie Percy.
William Cottrell.
Uh, everyone rise for the pleasurable evenings, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full of the agenda, public comment. Full of minutes, warrants, correspondence, updates from town officials, revised tax rate discussion in action, FY twenty-four budget adjustment discussion in action, unicorn management, former general cable facility community update and right-of-way permitting discussion, community capacity building mini grant accessibility assessment proposal discussion and possible action, policy review and possible approvals, public use of facility use agreement, discussion and possible approval, discussion and possible approval of Parks and Recs collaboration with Vista to paint murals on skate park ramps, discussion regarding town residents contacting outside vendors individually, public comment, executive personnel in adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion, any changes, anything? Nothing tonight? Wonderful. All those in favor?
Aye.
All hands, do we have any public comment?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, approval minutes, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Stack it up.
Any corrections, questions, additions? Corrections, nothing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants, counts payable, August second, two thousand twenty-four, sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and six cents.
So moved.
Stack it up.
Any questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable, August ninth, fifteen thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Corrections, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Payable, August second, twelve thousand one hundred and one dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Staying. Payable, August ninth, eleven thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved.
Stack it up.
Questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, uh, email from B C R C, um, seeking your board's blessing to use the meeting room space on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Um, so it's a few different emails, which basically just started with a request from Callie, um, asking if she knew a good spot to use September nineteenth, uh, for their meeting for twenty to thirty people, and I gave her a list of options of places I know, and she's hoping that the board will allow them to use this space. And it's the nineteenth from, uh, starting around five thirty, five, five, and that would be not a regular meeting night for you guys. It's an off week.
And just so that we're clear on the purpose of.
It is their regular September B C R C meeting.
That's right, that's what I thought. I was looking for in this email. I thought I saw it somewhere, but I don't see it right here now. So it's the regular B C R C monthly meeting. I'll entertain a motion to.
Oh, move.
Prove B C R C.
Stack it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any more correspondence?
No, but if, um, if you approve the policy for public use of the space later, I'll have her fill out that stuff for B C R C.
Okay. Uh, updates and town officials?
Oh, I have a few of them. Um, the first one is from Eddie, our animal control officer. The only updates he said he has are ten animal control office, uh, officer calls for service were answered this month. One animal was impounded this week, but released to the owner when it was found. He received three calls, um, which was a little challenging for him because they were all like at the same time. It was kind of zero to sixty in a minute, but he did pretty well handling them. He answered a few of them and wasn't able to get to another one. Um, so he suggested, you know, maybe there's time for an auxiliary A C hour or someone to kind of help him out. I think he should call Amy. Um.
Have to improvise.
That's right, yeah.
Prioritize.
Yeah, because I don't feel like that's a common situation.
Right.
No.
We rarely get, you know, one or two a week is usually it. Um, so the second update is from Julie, and she just wanted me to let everyone know that the office, the town clerk's office will be closed on Tuesday the thirteenth because that is when primary voting will be held here at the town offices. And lastly, from Joel at the Highway Department, he said, we are currently blacktopping West Metal Court, has the base on it, and will raise all the manholes prior to blacktopping. Um, we raised, sorry, they raised the manholes. Uh, today, Wednesday the seventh, they started doing the shim and overlay on Maple Grove. We're trying to get driveway approaches done before they put the top coat on West Metal. We are also dishing the spot grading roads from the heavy rains. We also have to start the Tubbs Road project as soon as the paving is done. We have to assist the wastewater department on some more manhole rebuilds at the end of the month. I've been working with Tara and Hannah on getting a plan for the walkways and ramps at the back of the building also. Any questions about any of the projects, let me know. Joel.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I believe Maple Grove Road was finished.
Yesterday.
Well, they finished it today.
On the deck.
The top of Joel was already tall, right? But the blacktop was done on Maple Grove. Um, and they have a plan to finish West Metal point in place, so my top of Joel is more than free. That's it from town officials, right?
Yeah.
Um, revised tax rate discussion in action, possible act, not telling them, actually it's action.
I'm on.
I'm on.
No.
Hi, guys.
Hello, Ellen.
So two weeks ago, I had presented you with your numbers to set the tax rate. Um, in the meantime, there was a couple of changes in the grand list. Those changes, um, when I had to, when, because I recalculate before I get ready to print taxes in recalculation with those changes. I was not raising, it was not raising enough money, um, to cover what we needed to raise for the road and the general fund. Um, so I made some changes. The overall change was point zero 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 five. It sounds like it's very minimal, but it had to happen because the calculation was not, I have to before I make sure the calculation, I'm raising enough money. Um, any E N Os, errors and emissions, E N Os, that happened down the road later after everything is done, those changes happen, and we deal with that when that happens. So the tax rate for the town went from point five seven seven, wait, six five eight two, that's the road, the local agreement and the general. So the overall tax rate now, homestead tax rate would be set, um, at one point nine 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 two, and the non-residential is two point four oh five oh. So both of those actual tax rates went up to point zero 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 five. It was enough to make a difference that I had bring forward a new tax rate for you guys to.
Anybody have any questions? We had a chance to ask questions.
No.
Well, well, um, I had a few this morning, but she took care of them. Okay.
And the packet's available online, so.
Yeah.
You're what I think like.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjust the tax rate, reset the tax rate.
So moved.
Second.
We're going to reset the tax rate to one point nine 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 two, is that correct?
For the homestead.
For the homestead. The tax rate for the town is point six five eight two.
Yep, and the non-residential tax rate.
Yep, non-residential is going to be two point four zero five zero.
Yep.
Just want that in my, in the motion. They have a motion? I have a second. Is there any more discussion on this? No more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Thanks for being so, um, diligent and accurate.
You're welcome.
Not sure everything's where it needs to be. Uh, FY twenty-four budget adjustment discussion in action.
So, hi, guys.
That's you again.
So, just a reminder for anybody out there asking, uh, wondering, when we go to vote, we vote for our overall budget, not each individual line. So making budget adjustments is just moving money from expense line to expense line. No fund money that is designated is moved from it, like if it was needed to cover a fund expense. But the way our accounting system is set up now, money drawn on funds is drawn directly from the fund, and I don't have to make a budget adjustment for those. So basically, in the, um, general fund, we'll go there first, I need to move fifty-eight thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents total to the top list, which you guys have these in your packet, from the bottom list, the same amount of money. It's broken down by line. I put in the line, um, the account numbers, uh, name on the account so that you know, like, I'm, who I'm taking it from and who I'm giving it to. So I'm just moving fifty-eight thousand dollars around in the general fund to cover any over expenditures that had happened. Excuse me, and in those different lines, if you have any questions on why they were overspent, I can do the best I can to answer them off the top of my head.
I can help with that a lot, too.
It's, um, if you look through here, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah. It's not dumb.
And where it's coming from means it wasn't overspent, so you take the money from there and move it over. But I have to get approval to do that because the final budget has been posted to the funds.
Are we doing, um, one at a time or you want to?
Yeah, let's do one at a time now.
Okay.
It's clear and memorable.
Yeah. So we're doing a budget adjustment um for the general fund. I'll entertain a motion to do a budget adjustment for the general fund of fifty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Same explanation for the road, money coming into some accounts from other accounts in the amount of forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Huh? You know, it's forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, any questions? Any motion, I have a second, all those in favor?
Uh.
So I may be doing those soon, um, because we are starting the FY twenty-four audit, so they'll be the end of August, beginning of September, that we look at for all this information.
Which means we'll have audited numbers for our town report.
Which we should, if they keep right on it, and, um, just the one other thing I want to say is now that we have the tax rate, if all goes well, I'm hoping to print next week and hopefully send them out by the following week to give people plenty of time. Um, the statute now states, um, I have to send them out at least thirty days before they're due. There's no longer no more than a ninety day. We could, we couldn't find that anywhere. I think we reached out to V L C T. So I can hit or miss the day mark, but I try to give them as close as I can.
Okay, thank you, Ellen.
Thanks very much.
You guys have a great evening.
Yeah.
You too.
And if Unicorn Man is here.
He was on earlier. But there he is.
Yes, we are here. Hello, everyone. Can you hear us? This is Amy Leonard and Michael O'Connor from Unicorn Management.
Yeah, hold on a second, Amy. I just want to get to the agenda item. Unicorn Management over general cable facility community updating right-of-way permit discussion. Okay, that's you, Amy.
Excellent. Thank you very much for giving us time during your meeting to discuss our requests. Um, back on June twenty-fifth, we had met with the town of Powell to do a site walk to expand our investigation of P F A from the former general cable facility plant one um, into some of the town right-aways. We are interested in installing additional monitoring wells. Uh, they will be nested wells with a maximum of three wells per location in the town right-aways. There are seven locations in total. Uh, we did submit in a, a right-of-way permit packet attaching those addresses, a fact sheet that we would like to distribute to the adjacent property owners, just so they're aware as to why we would be, um, in proximity to their property. And it, uh, figures, of course, uh, showing those locations and, uh, where the right-of-way is and location to their property. Um, we did have numerous departments from the town of Powell in attendance at that site walk, including a representative from the select board, and so we are respectfully requesting your permission to grant us, uh, access to install those wells in the right-of-way and maintain those and sample them in the future.
So I, I walked into the site walk with, with Darcy and Joel.
Mm-hmm.
The well driller and, um, and Unicorn Management, and identified the most appropriate locations and, um, I requested that they send the fact sheets because a lot of people are going to have questions why they're on there. Because it's within our right-of-way, but it looks like third yards.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So, um, I'm sure people may have questions about that. So the fact sheets were included in your packet so that you could see what we'll go with.
So my question is, um, Joel has been, um.
Yep, Joel and Darcy both.
And they both approved everything that's going here, okay?
And I'll have him, um, sign off on this right-of-way permit.
Mm-hmm.
If you, um, if you all approve, that is.
Anybody have any questions or? Well, Amy on this, or?
Any investigation?
Yeah, well, this is in Powell, but not here in the industry. During no questions? No concerns from the select board at this time? I'll entertain a motion to approve the application.
I'll make the motion to approve the application.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, the only question I have, Amy, is, um, timeframe for, uh, the scope of work to be done? Do you have that in place?
Yes.
We do.
I didn't notice it. I didn't notice it in the fact, I was looking for it. I just didn't notice, I mean.
Absolutely. We plan to initiate activities right around on, or before, um, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. That'll likely be mobilization uh, to the site with the equipment, and we expect all work to be completed by November first. And that would be for our first groundwater sampling that included within that timeframe. Per each property, we expect no more than three days at each property. The first day will be a setup, a hand clearing down to five feet, just for double assurance that there are no utilities in the location. Then we will advance the deep sporing, uh, the deepest sporing. That will give us the information to install the shallow and intermediate depth wells if necessary, and then the wells will be completed, developed. Uh, we do have to wait at least a week or two after the development before we're allowed to come back and sample. So that just explains why there is that timeframe difference. We will also, uh, likely be installing wells on the P F D two property. We did send them a separate fact sheet with the, uh, locations identified within their property as well, and they are aware of this work that's taking place. I know that was a question uh, from Terry and, uh, uh, Terry, excuse me, uh, Darcy and Joel during the site walk, so they have been informed as well.
Okay, that's perfect. That answers all of my questions, actually. Um, very detailed, very, very detailed. Thank you. And, um, so the residents that are affected, um, and the properties that are affected, they, we're going to send them a packet, is that? And or they have been sent, okay.
They will be going out shortly now, that's.
Yep, yep, perfect. Um, do we have a, do we have a, um, contact person um, for the affected properties? Amy, is that in here? If they have a problem or a question? Or are they going to reach out?
On the fact sheet. We, we actually list numerous contacts, so we do, uh, we did reach out to, um, Ms. Park, and she did agree to be the appropriate town contact, so we do have her listed on the fact sheet. It's in the black box on the left-hand side. We also have Francisco Trejo. He is the president of Unicorn Management. Um, certainly, I will be present on site at least for the beginning of work and throughout. I, I would be very happy to answer questions as well as, um, Mr. Graham Bradley from Vermont D E C, um, who has been overseeing the project, um, ongoing.
Right, now that's, okay, I see it now. Thank you. That's, that's exactly, you know, with having the, having Graham in there or someone from the D E C is, is definitely, is, is should reassure people that it's being done the right way.
Exactly.
Not something that's just being thrown together. Perfect. All right, any more, any more discussion? I'll have a motion.
I do have one question from.
Oh, sure.
Unicorn. Um, I guess the question with the fact sheet, is this something that the town would prefer to distribute, or would you like Unicorn Management to distribute that for the town? To the residents that will be affected?
Well, Unicorn would be better.
I think it'd be best to come from Unicorn.
I think it'd be better coming from you guys.
You.
That's perfectly fine. Just wanted to make sure for that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a, um, motion to approve. Er, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's what I was trying to say.
All right, thank you very much for all your kind of evening.
Have a good evening.
Jump ahead one item.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Um, community capacity building mini grant accessibility assessment proposal discussion and possible action.
Okay, so as you all know, we did get a mini grant that was different than the municipal energy, resilient resilience program, the M E R P. It was different than that. It was a, um, a mini grant that could be used for energy projects or, um, lots of different things. The scope was pretty wide, but we chose to use it for an A D A assessment of the old town offices. Um, the engineers or the architects that are available to do it are pretty slim pickings, and B C R C directed me to the site that has the state recommended. I only got one response, and it is the one that I sent you. Um, it is for total amount here, uh, would be twenty-five hundred and seventy-five dollars. The company is J A S W. His name is John, I'm gonna not pronounce this right, but Sacchio.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, sounds like, yeah, that.
I'm gonna go on Sakachi.
There you go.
Sakachi, that sounds good.
So anyways, this was the only, um, you know, estimate I was able to obtain from the recommended contractors, and he's willing to come out August twenty-eighth if you so approve.
The grant is.
Two thousand five in the grant is for four thousand, and Callie said that they prefer we use the entire grant amount, so I'll have to come up with another project or use that is applicable for the rest.
They may come up with an idea that we can utilize.
Um, I don't think they'll let you use it for implementation.
Okay.
It's got to be for study.
Or even, um, education programs, or maybe we can do something on our, in a town force, something with energy or, um, something like that. I don't know. I have to look more into it because we, I've just banked it all on getting the A D A assessment and.
Make a motion to uh, allow Tara to move forward with this.
The A D A.
Yep, the assessment.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I saw the date when I was looking.
It's, it was mid-August.
Mid-August, right?
Yeah, August, yeah.
There you go.
Twenty, yeah, it put me on his calendar, but what?
Visit the building mid-August, deliver a report September.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows what the dates are, too. Okay. Anyway, I just couldn't find it. Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any more, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gotta write that time, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Aye. Policy review and possible approvals?
I'll be sent those all. They're more of the same policies that you did during the work session. With the phone.
I did have a couple of questions, but well, I'll wait till that we get to that policy.
Um, some of them are brand new, but they were kind of taken from other things. The ones that are not brand new are the S X policy, the social media policy, and the email policy. They're just a little too in-depth. I put in the personnel policy, they're not, they don't really seem to fit, so I figured why not just keep them separate. Um, and then the town attorney policy was the one totally new. Oh, and the grant policy that I didn't print.
I'll do them one at a time?
What's that, Mike?
We want to do these one at a time?
Well, I have a question on the grant policy, and I have a question on the, uh, attorney policy, so.
All right, let's do them one at a time then. What's, um, email policy?
Make a motion to accept it as written.
I second it.
Any questions on the email policy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ethics policy?
So moved.
Stack it up.
Questions on the ethics policy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, facility use policy?
Oh, that one, I think you have a separate agenda item.
Yeah, I think it's a separate agenda item, isn't it?
Yeah.
We have, well, the policy we have is agreement is different. We have the agreement is a separate agenda item.
So.
Right? We don't have the.
Well, it says it's the public use of facility use agreement discussion and possible, huh?
Well, we can, we can do it at a time. Um, uh, grant policy?
One question on that. Uh, li, uh, item two, grants not meant to be used in any way to determine direction of panel responsibility for determining lies first with the select board, planning commission, parks, and conservation. My only concern there is if there's a disagreement between, like, say, the select board and the planning board.
The select board gives the final say.
It, but it doesn't say it in there, that's all.
I think it has to. I don't think it has.
That's the way the committee, the board and the subcommittee, it's a.
Right, they, you know, they all kind of work on their own.
I, I understand that, but if.
Don't, don't we have a setup that all grants have to come through the select board?
Yes, and it's, yeah, that's further down.
Right.
So.
That's what I thought.
So we.
Agreement, everything must come through the select board for public discussion.
So then, if you guys didn't agree with that, it's.
Well, I was worried about the flip side, uh, but anyways, that was just a concern I had on that. That was all. It didn't stated in there, and if things aren't stated, then they don't exist.
Yeah. That was your only question on that one?
That was it, only question on that one.
So moved, as written.
Stack it up.
Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, social media policy?
Oh, move.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And
use of attorney.
Town's attorney policy. Sorry, I'm just trying to open these. Quick, you just said the pain get open torn.
Yeah.
There, no, I just wanted to make sure I had it open, so I.
My only question was, and it's just, maybe more just a statement. Uh, the last one, one-on-one communications between the select board and the town attorney is, or otherwise is discouraged. I'd like it strong, I like the wordage stronger in there. I'd like it strong, I like the wordage stronger in there than discouraged. I mean, there's a lot of things that I've been discouraged upon, but I still did them.
I couldn't figure out what a better, what a stronger word is.
Don't do it. Let's go.
Not allowed?
Not allowed, period.
It would be as stated by the. There may be a different board. Dynamic and they may change the way that is. The allowable.
Well, the current board.
I know the current board is on board with what.
I would worry about, I would worry about what you guys want, and then if a different board changes the policy, then that's.
Correct.
That's up to that board.
That's up to that board. My only concern. Just any communication between the select board has to be with somebody else on the email, not a one-on-one.
Correct.
Email.
Yeah, it should never be.
Okay, and exactly, that's what I'm getting at. It should never be a one-on-one discussion.
I've always stated that it should be in an e- email form, therefore we all. Know what the question was.
Okay, so.
Just for clarity.
Want to change discouraged to is not allowed?
Or, or do we change it one-on-one?
How about prohibited?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Big word.
There you go.
Wow, big word.
There you go.
Now you're just a big word of the day so far.
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I changed the word to prohibited.
But I'm happy.
All those are now, is that?
Are you happy with that?
I'm happy.
Okay.
I want to take a motion to accept the uh town attorney policy with the change. So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Is that the last one?
I think so.
That's it, right?
Other than that, yeah.
Facility use.
All right, so I'm in the policy review. Public use of facility agreement discussion impossible approval.
This one, I feel we beat this dead horse for.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna buy a dead horse and bring it here. So that we can, we all, cause we're very good at beating a dead horse.
So I took out all of the fees. Because we let people use the space now. We don't make them pay. I don't think we should make people pay.
We're not supposed to make money any.
A lot of the time I come and let them in, or Hannah will, or even sometimes Bill offers. It is what it is. We make it work. I don't want to charge people to use the community space.
Especially if it's community and that.
And then the security deposit and all that stuff, that's like, come on.
I mean, if something happens where something gets broke or something, we can look at it later on, but.
Well, if we require them to have insurance.
Right, exactly. The only thing that I had a question on is we don't have anything in there about um. No use of guns or anything on our properties.
I thought it was enough.
Did I miss it? I did so much reading, I might have missed it.
She's not one of them, don't.
I know. Hmm, add it.
And if, and if they're, and if they're, and if they're a group. They most likely have, have a um. A, 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 a thing so that they can turn around and have meetings elsewhere. Elsewhere, because all they gotta do is send you a copy of their insurance file.
Okay, how tobacco and drugs, I think it would be like.
Yeah, so we can put another header in.
Yeah.
Weapons, firearms.
Right, just because of the way the world is.
Right.
I think that is the only thing that I would see that I would want added.
All right, how about the agreements today, look?
You like soft targets, don't you, Angie?
I'm happy, well.
Yeah, I'm happy. I don't see anything out of the ordinary.
Um. God, I hate to say it. You want me to bring this back next time, so I can put the wording on there?
No, you can't.
No, no.
What's to make the change if you don't want it?
Yeah, just add it.
Just add it later. We're gonna tell you how to.
Just firearms, knives, weapons of any kind.
Kind, um.
What it's gonna say.
Uh, yes. And that's like, just general. Yeah, like school or library or anything like that. It's all in there.
Okay.
It's like no alcohol and all that stuff.
Perfect. One stop to add in.
Okay. We have the facility use agreement. Facility use policy. On the facility use agreements for reoccurring events and one-time use. I'll entertain a motion to approve all three with the addition of. Weapons, firearms and weapons on the facility use policy. So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? And that is um. Just to be clear, firearms and weapons are not permitted.
Correct.
In the facility use policy. Just so that's clear. I don't think I was prepared the first time. No more discussion, all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, perfect. Possible approval of Parks and Rec's collaboration with Vista to paint murals on the skate park grounds. So we definitely see that.
Yes.
Email from.
I think it's great ideas.
You don't remember the original email from Fay McDonald? Uh Vista, so people know what Vista is.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, says, hello, my name is Fay McDonald and I work with Southern Vermont Medical Center in Bennington, Vermont. As a community health vista, which is a volunteer in service to America. As a vista, I am responsible for organizing community events that work to promote healthy living and learning. I am currently organizing creation of the town's mural to showcase Bennington County assets. In past years, we have designed and painted murals at Bennington Recreation and Skate. And Stark Street Park. This year, we would love to paint the murals at the panel skate park in addition to Willow Park's BMX course. The plan is to collect designs from kids who will use the space and create a skateboard-themed collage on the sides of the ramps. We are aiming to have the murals completed by the end of October. Would the town of panel be in support of this project? Um, and if you so approve, Jen has um offered to collaborate with them. Um, as Parks and Rec.
And Jen was definitely in support of this.
Yeah, exactly. Now Jen and then, um, Jen said, you know, is this okay?
Yep. I just wanted to get that on record, too. What's your pleasure?
And make a motion for them to move ahead with it? To paint the murals on, it's just on the ramps, correct?
Yes, on the ramps, and I like the fact it's designed by kids.
Yes, I agree.
The kids that are using the park, yeah, that was kind of a kicker for me.
Yep.
Yeah, they're really, they're too cool, like, let's get them involved.
I'll second that.
Great. Uh. I have a motion or have a second? Any more discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is an agenda item that I put on. Recently, we've had some. Incidents when. Um, town residents have been reaching out to. Um, outside vendors, whether it's CC, not an email, or. Uh, calling Sheriff's Department directly. For non-emergency. Um. I don't. And. I think that. Um. I don't think it's. At the best. Use of taxpayer dollars for. Um, these vendors and outside contractors. To be answering questions for individual residents in situations like that. They should be coming to the, to the select board, either through. Um, info at town dot org to select board members, to the executive assistant, to whoever, and then we can reach out. Uh, cause we're the ones who are fiscally and financially responsible to the taxpayers of the town. Now, that being said, we don't have a policy set up or any type of a thing. Um, I would like to, I would like to be able to. When we hire an outside contractor, whether it be a sheriff's department or. Somebody that's doing the assessment or whatever we're hiring, the, the guy's black top in the highway, right, outside contractors, okay? And I'm just being very vague here, right? Um, we need, we need to make that. Known to those outside vendors and contractors. That when a resident reaches out to them, they are not to answer that resident. And that, that way we don't get charged time and, and money for it. I know it's not a lot of money.
But it adds up.
But every dollar is every dollar.
That's right.
And I'd like to make it a select board statement. Um, I don't know if we really need a policy on it, but you know, for when we hire an outside contractor.
That should be within the, that should be within the. Bid specs or however you want to, you know, however you want to put it, but it should be within, at that point, it's like. Like we put in there, Tara is the point person, right?
Which, or select board.
Or the select board, but you know what I'm saying? We put that in at, on the contract side.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. You know, and, and we don't want, I, this is my opinion. And we can vote it, however, I just think that, that when we have individuals. Reaching out to outside vendors and contractors, that's. There's potential for the town to get charged for, for those hours. I know, like I said, I know it's probably not a lot of money, but.
But I would.
Dollars, every dollar.
But I'd be more concerned about just making. Playing confusion, because if they're reaching out directly, well, then now our vendor doesn't know. Now, now there's two, they're hearing two voices.
And that's a great point, because that's exactly what happened last week.
Okay.
When email chain and um. I think that's exactly what happened. And the, and the sheriff's department reached out to me. And I took care of it.
Cause sometimes um there's instances of not having time to even respond. And maybe someone's looking for an answer faster. When that's not really appropriate, and I haven't really taken that much time to respond. Um, so just giving everyone in the office a fair chance to actually respond and handle the situation instead of.
Right.
Kind of going around.
And remember, the office's help is only here Monday through Friday. They're not here on weekends and.
A lot of the, a lot of these requests can be handled by coming into the office.
Exactly.
And looking things up yourself. It's not personal secretary type of things.
Uh huh, right.
You know, that's, that's not, it's not what Tara and Hannah are here for.
And a lot of the issues that are being brought forward. Also could be handled by us working with our. Uh. Highway department superintendent and home member.
Wow.
So.
Right.
That's the thing, it's like.
And I brought that up the last time when Eddie was here, we were talking about. You know, don't be calling the sheriff's department, reach out to Eddie or reach out to the town office. Things can be answered through.
So I guess what I'm looking for is, is a motion to have. Tara reach out to um our outside vendors and contractors that we have in place. Right now. And inform them that that's how we, as a board, would like it. And any new contractors or vendors moving forward that we hire.
Yeah.
Whatever, that, that, you know, we make that known to that contract and vendor. Um, that that's, that's how we would like it, that things come either to the select board, but if, if a resident reaches out. Then they don't answer that person. They direct them to come to the town.
That's exactly what I was gonna ask you. Not, not that they're not gonna answer, they're just gonna say. You know what? You gotta go to the select boards because we can't, we're, we're not gonna handle this.
Right.
Because it has to, the only person that tells us what to do is the select board.
Right, and I can't, I can't imagine that anybody is gonna charge us. Um, an hourly rate or, or a fee to say, I can't answer that question, go to the select board. I've been informed not to do that.
Go to your town.
There you go.
Official, yeah.
Right.
Now, does that need to be a motion for a letter of amendment? To their con- contract?
I don't think we need to.
No, I don't think it needs that.
I just, I'd like, I just would like it on record. I'd like a vote on it from this board. And so that we're all in agreement or not. Um. And maybe we're not. But that's just my personal feeling on that, and I, I would just like to vote on it.
I mean, by all means, if the person wants to pay to have their own driveway paved. They can contact the contractor after hours.
But that's not our.
Can't have them, you can't have them stop our job.
Right.
And you know, get, we get charged by the hour, and you know, you're talking about getting your driveway paved while we're paying for it. But it's gotta be.
Exactly.
Right.
Right, if they want to take the number off the side of the chalk.
Call and.
Call Joe's paving to, to have their driveway paved. By all means, I don't have a single problem with that whatsoever. Absolutely, but while Joe's paving is working for the town of panel. Then, no, that's not.
Right, don't do it on the town's time.
That's right, cause you know, that, that comes out of everybody's pocket, not.
I mean, I think, I don't know if the sheriff's office offers, you know, security for events and stuff, but. Maybe that's an option. You know, that's an option for some people in town if they, if they don't feel that there's enough security. Maybe they can contact the sheriff's office and.
They can hire them privately.
Yep, good point, good point.
I mean, there's, there are options out there.
Absolutely.
Good business opportunity.
Right, that's in our lives, gathering for metal.
Excellent point.
Which also.
Excellent. So I'll entertain a motion to um have Tara reach out to our current contractors and vendors. And inform them of that. And moving forward with any you.
Uh huh.
Um, that when we award a bid or a contract, that is. Um.
Yeah.
Relate to them. And that, that should alleviate all of that problem.
So moved, second.
Any more discussion on it? All was in favor?
Aye.
Um, public comment?
And it's real.
Any public comment here? No, you ain't. Okay, I will entertain a motion to. Going to executive for personnel.
Oh. Man, we're like lightning speed this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Part of the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moving forward, um, at the transfer station for the time being. Um, Bill is gonna continue to fill in for the next two weeks. And we're gonna post a temporary position. Um, for. Helper.
Operator.
Uh, operator, uh, the helper operator, thank you.